Before meeting of the Easton Meadow Planning Board to order. I call the rolls. Present are Mr. Punderson, Ms. Cher Swallow, Mr. Francico, Mrs. Terrell, and myself, Russell Denver, joined by the Deputy Town Manager Rebecca Lisi. Couple of things just to make note of if there's anyone in the audience who might be recording this meeting. Please state your name and the method in which you are recording the meeting. Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes of December 19th, 2023.
Motion to approve the December 19th, 2023 open session meeting minutes. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 No one opposed. So a couple of things have occurred since we were last together. So Bailey Mitchell, who was the town's planning and community development director has left the town and moved back to the Midwest. And Nina Fazio, who was the admin assistant, has also left and has moved on to a different position. So we are being ably assisted by Rebecca here for the time being. So with that said, the first order of business, Mr. Terrell.
Yeah, I'll see. Case Z N dash 2023 dash zero eight. Posed amendment of the town of Easton Meadows zoning bylaws, subsection four fifty dash three. Spots three and table three dash one schedule of use regulations to include backyard hens. Editioner town of Easton Meadow, sixty center square, Easton Meadow Mast, zero one zero two eight, continue from ten seventeen to.
So this is a continuance of the public hearing before we get into that. Do you want to share the email that you forwarded to us at eleven o'clock this morning?
Sure. So based on the feedback that town received during the first hearing on backyard hens, the manager's office, as well as the planning department and the health department met to see if we could figure out, figure out some ways of accommodating the questions and concerns that came up the first time. And we heard a lot of pushbacks against the prohibition of roosters. And so we decided to make some amendments that essentially eliminated the strict prohibition of roosters. We also eliminated some of the provisions that talked about the manner in which they should be kept in terms of the feeding and where the food should be kept and the materials that should be used. Because the health department felt that there were enough laws on the books between mass general law and the town's own nuisance and noise ordinances, sorry bylaws, that would allow for the health department to control problems that came up with chickens in general or specifically. So there's a new D that would replace strikeout of D E N F in the original proposal. And D says hen shall be kept in a manner that is consistent with mass general law, chapter one twenty nine, livestock disease control in the Massachusetts Department of Agriculture's Division of Animal Health Best Practices for backyard poultry keepers. And then on back of the sheet, which I will circulate for anyone who's interested. It talks about the specific bylaw provisions in the town of Easton Meadows. Bylaws and regulations that talk about the nuisance complaints and the general prohibition of noise. So if anyone would like this copy, I will.
While she's passing it off, passing that off, just remember that this if this ordinance here is passed, this bylaws pass, it moves on to the town council, which is the final disposition under this. And right before I open the public hearing, we're going to have civility. I don't want anyone yelling, no one screaming, no one calling anyone a communist or, you know, something like that, like they did the last meeting. And if you do, I will rule you completely out of order and you will stop your testimony. So we're going to have some civility as we get into this. So we are not Washington DC. We're the beautiful town of Easton Meadow and we should behave like that. So. So the floor is open. First person that might want to testify.
I think you need to make the formal motion to open.
Motion to open the public hearing.
So move second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, it passes. Anyone like to discuss this? Present to the board. Come on up and sign in.
My first time here, so.
Okay, no problem.
Send me the pen.
Ours too.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry about that.
So my name is Steve Kleins. I live on Elm Street. Here in Easton Meadow, I moved in in 2016 with my wife. I've got a whole bunch written here, so I may go with it. The, the change on the roosters does change a little bit about what I've written, but not too much. One of the reasons why my wife and I chose Easton Meadow as our place to reside is because of the rich history of the farming community. I grew up in Hamden, she grew up in Granby. Love the area, love what it reflects and everything about it. Regarding the chickens, she spent time researching town regulations pertaining to owning ducks and chickens. As there was and still is little to no info on the town website or in the town bylaws. She called town hall and couldn't get answers. She was eventually directed to animal control and was advised that we'd need to make sure they were securely protected from predators. The animal control officer even offered to come check art, check out our setup if we wanted, which was really nice. Since then, we've spent a considerable amount of time and money to make sure our chickens are safe from predators, have plenty of space and have good lives. We make sure they're in good health and clean their space regularly. We've gone above and beyond what we were advised to do. We've asked our neighbors if they'd have any problems prior to us getting chickens and they didn't have any objections. Some of them even come over to visit our chickens and they, they really enjoy them. Last April, we ordered eight chickens. We planned to get all hens, but human error ticked one wrong box and got an unsexed pair. So it's kind of roll of the dice. We didn't know if we were going to get two roosters, two hens, one of each, but luck had it, we got two roosters. So we had six hens, two roosters as a result. We didn't know that we were going to have two roosters until about eighteen weeks. That's, that's when we could finally tell that they were both males. They started crowing. It was, it's kind of funny when they do it initially. It's, it's not alarming at all. It's kind of, kind of funny. Having two roosters in such a small flock wasn't really a good idea. Having two roosters with six hens. So in mid-September, we made a really difficult decision to dispatch one of our roosters. I don't want to ever have to do that again. Did it my, myself, my own hands and it's pretty traumatic to have to do that. The rooster that we kept shows no signs of aggression. He's very much a sweetheart and walk over, pick him up. It's great with my nephews, great with kids, great with the other hens. He does make some noise. He's a rooster. He crows. He doesn't do it all hours of the day. Does it in the morning a couple of times. The day if he gets startled, he'll make some noise. If there's a squirrel or a deer in our backyard, he'll, he'll let us know. One of the really good things about that is that he does let us know if there's a hawk or an owl flying overhead. When I have the chickens out, I can't always keep my eyes up to see because I want to watch them where they are. But he does let me know. He makes a grumbling noise and starts running back to the coop. The hens follow him to go back in. So he really is the protector of the flock, not, not me, not my wife. Another good thing about having a rooster is that we'll be able to get fertilized eggs. If one of our hens stops being able to lay eggs, we can replace that hen. We can have a perpetual flow of eggs by having a rooster. So I'm really glad that, that prohibition of roosters was struck off of this, that, that to me is a very good thing. But I'd also like to address clause C, which is about the location of the enclosure. Our coop is a converted shed. It's old garden shed that we were seeing in a little bit of disrepair. We spent some money on fixing it up. Cut a hole in it, put the automatic door on, attached a enclosed run to that. It's more than 25 feet from my house, but it butts my property line with my neighbors. There's a significant amount of wooded property behind that. So it's not like my coop is right on top of my neighbor's house. On top of any property they use. It's all woods between me and them. It's got to be about forty feet, fifty feet of woods and then their yard. So having it 25 feet would mean that I would have to spend more time, more money moving that shed or building a new shed to accommodate my six hens and one rooster. Again, these are neighbors that come visit with the chickens that enjoy them. So there's, so in conclusion, I would like to request clause C as written be struck from the proposed amendment. If this amendment is passed as written, my wife and I will need to spend more time, more money and more effort on our enclosure or build another one. It'll be, it'd be forced to basically just take more time and effort to do something that currently isn't a problem for us or our neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Hey, everybody. My name's Dawn Fonte. I live at eight forty Summers Road here in town. I just have one question. Why was B not double checked? Like, why is there only a limitation to twelve, twelve female hens? Is there a reason for that, that that number was picked? Can I ask a question or do I have to just, I wasn't sure?
You can ask a question.
Yeah.
Rebecca, do you want to add anything? Or David, do you want to add why twelve was the magic number?
Oh, sure. That was just a number that's used in other communities that has been successful. They've adopted it. Agawam is the most recent community to do such a thing. South Hadley, where I worked before, that was what it was. It's just a number to start a, what I think is really important is for people to realize during this hearing process that a proposal for an amendment can be made. The twelve was a starting point. That can be changed. I have no problem with that. My, my concern here was to simply that the behavior of having backyard chickens in residential districts is currently legally not allowed. This is enabling, this is a process that will create something that will enable people to do exactly what they want to do. So through consensus, of course, there might be somebody, but that's where twelve came from because it has worked in other.
Thank you.
So generally as a norm, when you go and buy chickens, you have to buy at least six. You generally don't buy one chicken or two chickens. There are multiple chickens. And the thing with this is like the person before me stated, sometimes chickens will stop laying eggs. So then you'll want to purchase more chickens if you want to keep up that consistency. And a lot of people are not going to dispatch the older chickens just because they stopped laying eggs. So there could be a time where you're going to have an exceeded amount, more than twelve of chickens. Some of them might be older and not laying, and they might pass naturally, which most chicken owners prefer. So with that said, I just feel like that number should be changed. It's just, in my opinion, I don't have exact number to give anybody, but I do think that should be increased.
So when, just if I ask you a question, so when in your mind does it become too many? What's too many in a residential district? What would you think?
So I have that ability. I live on Summers Road, so I'm kind of not in a, in a neighborhood. So I really can't speak for that. I have enough land and I have enough clear property and woods where the chickens can range. I just feel the chickens need to have their own space. So it should follow the rules, how many square foot per chicken in their sleeping area and in their free ranging or their run area. Maybe it goes by the size of the lot. Maybe it goes by the stat size. So not to put down a flat number per se, but maybe, you know, if you're in a true residential area, and I can't speak for everybody, maybe in a true residential area, maybe that number is good. Maybe if you live in the outskirts where you have more land or wooded area, maybe the number should be higher. But I don't feel like it just should be one flat number. I think that should be looked into a little bit more.
Thanks.
Yep. And thank you for changing the rooster law. Appreciate that.
So that's a proposed.
Yes, sorry.
Anyone else like to be heard on this?
Hi, my name's John Bernie, one forty one Meadow Brook Road. I wasn't at the first meeting, but I watched it online. And I guess the first question we got to ask ourselves is regulation really necessary? I'm not sure at the first meeting, there was a strong point necessitating regulation. I think we have to be careful not to over regulate things. East Long Meadows been a farming community for, for since its inception and people have been raising chickens in town for a long, long time. You prefaced the meeting by saying there's already some ordinances that would help govern this, a noise ordinances and animal control officer and things like this. The real question, do we need additional regulation? And I certainly don't think so. And then with, with, with respect to this particular proposed bylaw, there was one obvious omission in that. And what about lots over 10,000 square feet? I didn't see any provision for large parcels of land. So my recommendation would be don't over regulate things. If there's not an obvious need for a regulation, leave it as is and let the existing town laws govern it as, as situations arise. Every situation is going to be different. And, you know, one person might be able to manage and control fifty hens without any adverse to the neighbor whatsoever. So I'd say let's look at this on a case by case basis and not over regulate things.
Question? Thank you.
Oh, the only other point I'd like to make. Like to make one other point. My understanding is everything in town is ag residential. I'm a large property owner and I believe I'm all, I'm in the same residence as, as a regular homeowner. So I believe you have the right to raise chickens as long as it's not impacting your neighbors.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard on this matter?
Hello, I'm Enrico Oliveri. I live on Seven Hanford Hill. And my concern is with section C as well. I think one of the other gentleman mentioned already how he's got a coop that he had set up and I did as well. And I followed the standards about how close you could be to the property lines. And I believe accessory buildings on the side and the rear only need a five foot space between the property lines. And I don't think anywhere in any of the bylaws, it says anything about even a barn being further than five feet from the line. I may be wrong about this, but that's the way I read it. So I spent, you know, probably a thousand dollars or so to build not only the coop, but I was worried about hawks as well, too. So I've got an enclosure, a run that's completely enclosed, top and everything. So it even has blocks going into the ground, so nothing can dig under there because I wanted them to be safe. So I think, you know, having something like the distances that they're requesting, I think it's 25 feet that they're saying is, you know, totally would be unacceptable. And a lot of people that have smaller lots, it'll be impossible for them. Because if you try to find, you know, the 25 feet plus the difference distance from the house, it'll really exclude them from having a coop at all. And then the other thing too is just, I don't know if there would be any grandfathering clauses, even if something were to change. People that have already invested a whole lot of money and time and effort in building a structure for the, for the chickens and the hens. I don't think that they should have to move that. There's a big expense with doing that as well, too. So my biggest one was with the positioning of it. And I guess to reiterate what some of the other people said about the numbers of chickens. There's a couple of things. There are some standards for coops as to how many square feet of coop space you need for a chicken and then how much for runs. So you might be able to use that plus the size of the property to determine, you know, if it's sufficient to, you could have more than twelve if you can have the coop sizes large enough as well, too, or the areas you have them in. So I think in C, both of those things would need to be addressed.
Thank you. How many square feet do they require for a chicken?
I don't remember exactly. I think it was like three square feet inside the coop itself for a chicken. And then I don't remember who's four or five outside the coop for the.
How large is your coop?
Mine's six by eight.
Six by eight.
Six by eight for the coop and then I have eight by twelve for the run.
Okay.
And I have, right now I only have six chickens.
So there are standards at least.
There are. Well, I don't know if it's a standard, but if you, if you look online, you'll see like backyard chicken or some of those will
Okay.
Kind of tell you, you know, what you should have minimum kind of standards.
That's just something. So, I mean, if it goes to where you just go on the existing noise. Somebody could go in and say, well, you have, I don't know, square feet, you gotta get rid of some of the chickens or whatever. So.
Yeah.
It's just some standard to go by.
Yeah. I mean, I, like I said, I know it's an official standard, but when I researched it, that's what I had found. Which is a whole lot better, by the way. Then, I don't know, they recently changed some of the laws for people that were caging chickens for production. And they literally have, you know, this, a size of a piece of paper for the chicken, which is horrendous.
Chicken farm when I was younger. I know exactly what they.
Yeah, it's not very good. Thank you.
Well, I question, Russ.
Sure.
Does anybody here live on Chestnut Street and have the coop on Chestnut Street? Is that, is that you? Around, around the bend, around the bend?
Uh, no.
You had some left hand side of your house. You have the doors that open like this. Is that you?
Facing the house, it's on the left.
Right. And you have doors that open up like this. You put a fence.
Shutters, yeah.
Shutters.
Yeah.
Good job.
Tried to make it look like part of the house.
It's beautiful.
Instead of like.
We just started it out. I was wondering what's going on, then I finally figured it out. But you put a nice fence up and all that stuff. I mean, it looks great.
Started as one thing, but.
How many, how many hens do you have?
I only have six right now.
Okay. Do you have any roosters?
No, I unfortunately got rid of everyone. He was a little aggressive.
But you got a nice setup there, that's for sure. Anyone else would like to be heard on this matter?
Russ, you can't get through a meeting without me. Ralph Page, one thirty.
What I say last time, I greatly appreciate your piece on town, on town matters.
Thank you.
So others may not, but I certainly believe that you do an outstanding job for all the residents of the town.
Yes, you do.
So the first thing I'd like to do is agree with Mr. Bernie. I think we have to be very careful about attempting to over regulate a situation. Having gone through the bylaw and looked at it very carefully. We do have agricultural bylaw in there under the zoning, under the table of uses, but it's listed under a general use, not as an accessory use. So what does that mean? Well, in general, it means if you have a parcel of land and you want to do farming on it, if it's above five acres, there's certain rules. If it's under five acres, there's other rules. But if you have a residential house on a parcel and you still want to do farming, of which there's quite a few in town. The interpretation of the bylaw is that that would be an accessory use and currently that's not allowed in our bylaw. It would be my suggestion that we take a hard look at taking our agricultural bylaw that's in here under table three, two, and literally photocopying it under accessory use, which would mean someone in a residential zone could have chickens. And it would be governed by the amount of land that they had. If it's above five acres, it falls under this category. If it's under five acres, it falls under this, which also goes to the point of having a farm stand. I think everyone's probably noticed there's multiple farm stands out there, whether it be selling wood on the side of the road or selling eggs or something like that. Where technically those aren't allowed right at the moment. By adjusting the agricultural bylaw, I think it would fix the situation that we're talking about. I don't think we could, we should get into the exact number of hens you should have. I mean, we have animal control, we have noise. I mean, if there's issues, we have ways of combating that. And I think we should let those play themselves out. But I do think we should at least fix the bylaw as far as have an accessory use as farming because everyone's under the thought that this is a, basically what I'm going to call a right to farm community. If I have a side yard and I want to, you know, farm it and sell vegetables that I can. Technically, that's not allowed. Right to farm community basically governs true farms. A parcel of land that's used just for farming. Obviously Meadowbrook Farms would fall under that. Squire Farms would probably fall under that. But there's only a few that would fall under that. Most of the ones that we have in town would fall under an accessory use. So that's my two cents. Thank you very.
Thank you, Ralph. Anyone else like to be heard on this matter? I'll ask one more time. Sure. Come on forward.
I speak for me.
If you can tell us what your name is.
Larry Rich.
Okay, thank you.
Larry Rich.
Perfect.
I had a meeting with you people two, three years ago. Nobody ever got back.
And what was that on?
Pigs. I got a pig pen thirty feet from my bedroom window.
Okay.
Hey, that pig pen is directly on the line. And I see here you're going twenty five feet.
Proposed. Yep.
Yeah, proposed. But back in ninety one, they went from five acres to five acres or less. With no restrictions.
With, with respect to what? Storage, with respect to what? Storage of pigs?
The pigs. Like I say, pig pen is right on the line.
Yep.
There's a pig from the bedroom window.
Okay.
I complained about it. Nobody ever got back to me. Now, how soon would the town go back to me if I didn't pay my taxes?
Well, I don't collect taxes. I, I do know someone who is here who does collect taxes. But, but I won't point that person out.
God, I can't hear you.
Okay. Okay.
I've been in this town for eighty years. I came here when I was nine years old. And this town has only gone one way as far as residential. There isn't a residential zone in the town the way it's written up. Peace.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard on this matter? Please come forward if you can.
Okay. Hi, I'm Stephanie Pish. I live at thirty seven Helen Circle. I am happy that we got rid of D through F because I think I said the last week, I didn't think those were really necessary. I still would like to point out that that again, like as everyone said, C, like it would make people that already have chicken coops not be able to have chickens. And if, like, I think my property is technically nine thousand eight hundred square feet, so you know, it would make it impossible pretty much in my size lot to have, to go by the, by, like the section C to have our enclosure. And that. And that, you know, I, I mean, I, I, I can't propose things. I think I'm not, you know, a town council person. But I wish that we could just get rid of this whole thing. Because, I mean, it, it says that the backyard hens in section B. Um, should be kept as pets or for the purpose of providing eggs. But like, there's no law on like how big the property has to be to have a dog or a cat. And I'm sure there's people that have lots of cats and lots of dogs. Um, so it just, if it's, if it's supposed to be a pet, then I think it should be equal as like a cat and a dog would. Um, I don't know, I'm just hopeful that we can just scrap this and talk up a different solution. I am happy we got rid of D, D through F though. Yeah, that's, that's it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on this matter? Last one more time, anyone else like to be heard on this matter? Hearing none. Uh, what's the pleasure of this or do you wish to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
You have a second, motion made in second to close the public hearing, any discussion?
Yes. I agree one hundred, one hundred percent with John Bernie and Ralph Page. We have, if you look at the last, last part of our, the proposal, it says that, you know, we have in place. Regulations that, uh, will address any excess noise. It seems to be that there is written somewhere to proper square footage for a proper care of a hen, doesn't live out in the mud. So, you know, and not taken care of. And I, I think that we have our own. We have enforcements.
So this is just on the motion to close.
Oh. Yeah, okay.
All right. So on the motion to close the public hearing, any further discussion?
No.
Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, hearing none. Now open discussion?
Yeah. Try again. I just wanted to get it out quickly because I, I think that, yes, I think that it is a farming community. I've been here seventy-two years. I grew up on a farm in East Long Meadow, two hundred and fifty acre farm. And I think the people have the right to do that, but nobody has the right to cause grief to any neighbor at any time. I, I think that any, um, hen house, chicken coop should be under the law, under the rules that, uh, uh, we have for, um. Accessory structures, five feet from the line, anything over, what is it Ralph? Eight by eight has to have a permit? Whatever it is.
Two hundred square feet or greater.
Yeah, so.
Well, two hundred square feet are under, not require a permit.
Right.
Anything over two hundred square feet does.
But still is required to be five feet off the line. Am I correct on that?
Depends where it's located on the property.
Okay. Because I know there's a lot of existing ones that probably don't conform to that. Um, I would have no problem saying that would be grandfathered in, but I agree with John and I agree with Ralph and I think that, uh, it's a good proposal.
Any discussion, any further discussion?
I, I just, you know, to the points that were made tonight, I get concerned about over regulating something. And I think we're all saying the same thing here. I think there's some tweaks. I like Ralph's idea. I appreciate what John Bernie had to say. I, you know, I worked extensively on bylaws a couple of years ago to codify them, so I kind of read everything. I understand what Ralph is saying when he, when he talks about moving into the accessory and, and going forward. And I think we've got enough in place to regulate it.
I do, I do too. So we should get that in motion and get that accessory purpose put in there.
Well, we make the motion, I think we can add it, but go ahead.
Or we can, we can just vote this one down.
Yeah.
A new one could be submitted.
We can do that.
With that, any other further discussion?
I walk early in the morning and the dogs bark at me more than the chickens. I have a neighbor's chicken. And I, I, my personal, I don't think the chickens bother me whatsoever in my neighborhood and the dogs are more of a nuisance.
My, my daughter and, and son-in-law live right next door to a person that had two lots that have chickens and turkeys. And I asked him, I said, is any nuisance? He says, no, I get up before they do and I wake them up, so.
I've heard of, you know, I take the dog out in the morning too and, and, you know, I hear a rooster, rooster crowing a couple of streets over and it doesn't really bother anybody.
And, and the, the fact that the rooster protects the hens, I didn't know that. Because I have birds, I love feeding birds and the red-tailed hawk comes down, poof, there's just a big feathers once in a while.
Oh, yeah.
And I can only imagine him looking down and going, wow, there's two, there's two meals in that little chicken, so. That's, that is what the rooster does, I, besides fertilizing the eggs, I mean, I think it's a good thing.
Any other further discussion? So it, it looks like we might be moving towards just voting this down. But I would just like, I just cannot let this pass. There are people who are not happy living next to people that have chickens and roosters. It's a fact.
Mm-hmm.
Or if it weren't a fact, our zoning enforcement officer would not have brought this to us. So let's be cognizant of that fact. Not everybody loves them. In fact, the most basic real estate law that you learn first year of law school. Is the individual's right of quiet enjoyment of their property. And if you're living next to a rooster and it's going however it's going, that's not quiet enjoyment. So let's just, you know, think about that for a minute. But with that said, I agree with a lot of the points that were brought and I will, one, will vote to, to turn this down.
And, and so. Follow up to that, I, I don't think I'd like to live next to a rooster either, but if it's, you know, causing you problems, making you uncomfortable.
Then you should complain about it.
Have something done about it.
And there is a system of checks and balances in place to address that.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Do I have a motion? It needs to be an affirmative motion.
I make a motion to recommend that the town council adopt the proposed amendment of the town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaw subsection four fifty dash three point three. And table three dash one, schedule of use regulations in relation to backyard hens as presented.
So a, a yes, yes?
I'll second, go ahead.
So motion made in second, so, um, any further discussion? So, um, a yes is you're voting to adopt as submitted.
Correct.
A no is you're voting to turn this down.
Correct.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
This fails. Thank you.
Take our egg deliveries now.
This is where.
The guy can't do it all.
We need, we need a part-time.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yes, we do. I agree.
Absolutely.
Dawn, I, I didn't rat you out either.
Not by name, not by name.
I, I went around the other day and I took pictures of six properties that I'm going to have to turn in, it's just.
That's awful.
Yeah.
The amount of, the amount of. Congratulations.
Yes, this commercial vehicles marketing driver.
Correct.
I got six of them. I got, I have to turn it in.
Yeah.
All right. I can't look at it any longer.
So, uh, the next order, the next business, the planning committee development staff report? I know your staff.
Kind of in there.
So the only other, um. Information to report out is that we are still searching for a new planning director, but we have been able to hire. An administrative assistant to the planning department and they begin on the eighth. Um, this individual has a lot of experience with ZBA and Con, Conservation Commission in particular. Um, and we think they'll be able to, um, start off running and so we're very excited about that.
That's good.
Good, good, good. Any other? Any other thing to report?
No, I think that's it.
Okay. Any other business anyone have? So a motion to adjourn?
From all.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.